Welcome to our temporary, very temporary, meeting location in the Assessors Conference Room on the first floor. Today is January 8th of 2019 and I call the meetings to order. Okay, we're going to skip the fudge of allegiance today because we do not have a large bag down here. And we're going to go to public comment number one. And this comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda or anything else that you would like to discuss. Anyone interested in having public comment? Having done, we're going to move right on to consideration of minutes.
I move approval.
I think there might be some corrections in the comments.
Okay.
I'm not going to second.
Okay. So, we should discuss this that I believe our clerk made a couple of Scrivener errors that were corrected. One of them was item 19 was put on twice, so one of the item 19s were removed. One of them was listed, I believe, as an appointment for, to the Juneville Detention Center and it had still in the Merkin listed where it actually would be me. Yes, I'll pull that up, okay.
Pardon?
Item nine.
Right, but that one's corrected, right?
That one is corrected.
And that's the one I was moving.
Oh, you're moving this one right here.
It's in our packet.
You presented. All right. So, we still have, would you like to rethink that Supervisor Merkin? Or do you want to still, why don't you take a look at this one and see how that is?
I didn't change it.
You didn't change it?
No. You highlighted what was incorrect and I left it as it was. So, stating what the changes need to be is fine.
Let me make a motion for changes and then we can amend it if I don't get this correct. We got to start. I would recommend that the Central Iowa Juvenile Detention, or I moved that Central Iowa Juvenile Detention Board be changed for Loris Olson and then Rick Sanders alternate. On the Prairie Rivers, I would move that, further, that under Prairie Rivers, that title be changed to Prairie Rivers of Iowa because I've been told that's their new name. They are no longer an RCD. I would, and then that Safety Committee and Wellness Committee be removed because we talked about those were not official appointments, but as a new supervisor, I volunteered to sit in on them. So, since they're not official appointments, I think they should be taken off as best.
Yeah, and so I would second that and I would just note, with the exception of the whole RCD Prairie Rivers of Iowa thing, which is accurate to give it a RCD, that is, as we discussed it in last meeting, so we're not, in fact, changing anything that we discussed, we're just making sure the minutes reflect what we actually did.
So, everything's going to stay on the minutes as marked on here, except for the, I don't want to pull off the two that you're, that's not official representative committees, but I want to reflect what you did on the minutes for those two, for the safety and the wellness. That they're not official representative committee and boards that you're going to, you're not...
Can you maybe restate the motion?
No, that's...
Okay, I understand what you're saying, that's fine.
And I think Shelley and I talked about her taking those two items and moving them down underneath as just a note, a sense reflecting that they were not official appointments.
Correct. They're not official appointments, so we'll just state that.
That's fine. The only other question I had is under Story County E-911 Service Board, I was told by Keith Morgan that it's now called the 911 Service Board, the E has been dropped. Is that your understanding there?
I don't know.
Okay, so maybe we should check that. I also didn't understand why there was the phrase, this jail reported on the Story County project, why that was not listed of the appointments.
Because it happened during the appointment.
Okay, that's fine then. I didn't understand it. Okay, then I'm not changing my, I'm not asking to change my motion. Can I call a question?
Okay. I'll start with you then, Merkin.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Olson. Aye. Okay, thank you. Let's move on to consideration of personnel, actions.
I'll move the action forms out of there.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Sanders.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Olson. Aye. Consideration of claims?
I move approval of claims as listed.
Second.
Any discussion? Merkin.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Olson. Aye. Consent agenda, I'd like to pull item seven, item number eight, consideration of claims.
And I want to pull item number one.
Okay. And item number one. Can I get a consent discussion?
Yeah, so I'll move it with those two items forward for discussion.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion on those? Sanders.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Olson. Aye. Item number one, consideration of setting a special meeting on January 22nd, 2019 at 6:00 PM located at Gates Memorial Hall to discuss construction evaluation review of Master Matrix and related topics. This was submitted by the board of supervisors. Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, just a couple of questions. One, so the construction evaluation review of the Master Matrix is something that Story County has typically passed, and in fact, we've typically passed it as part of a consent agenda. So, I'm wondering what we're doing there, if there's some kind of big discussion of whether we're going to or not. And the second one is related topics, I'd like more information than adequate. Have a special meeting.
Certainly, yes, okay. You are correct that in most years, there, it has been an agenda item for passing the Master Matrix. When I came on the board two years ago, you had it listed and I thought it was a good idea to have it listed as a separate agenda item, as that it was an issue in my campaign. I had membership in a group that was, in fact, wanted changes in the Master Matrix. So, I decided to, for that particular item, I decided to follow your example. I thought it was a good example from two years ago because Supervisor Merkin is coming on as a new supervisor and to have some of those same, that same level, that discussion about what it meant to pass it, et cetera. So, exactly that. And then the related topic, I'll let Supervisor Merkin describe what she had indicated she would like to have the agenda reflect.
Twenty-three or maybe 25 counties in Iowa by now have passed a resolution calling for moratorium on any new CAFO sites being permitted until there are changes in the Master Matrix or some other things would seem to be useful for everything that we're seeing. I was going to present a resolution for moratorium, similar to what at least 23 other counties in Iowa have done.
So, would it be fair to expect, Linda, that this would be a resolution that is either, that is substantively, substantively what ICCI has been pushing that those 23 counties have passed, or would it be a resolution that would look different than that in your expectation?
It might be different and it might look a little shorter than what ICCI is putting together. Also, there's been a lot of different resolutions, some of them like Winnebago County, talking about the karst topography, which doesn't apply to Story County. What I would like to do is craft it to be specific to Story County issues that citizens have shared with us and other issues relevant to our county.
And would it be your expectation that that draft resolution would be available to the public prior to the 22nd, or are you expecting that that night or 22nd, you'll have an opportunity to submit that?
I think it would be good, and I had not thought about the next step there, so thank you. I think it would be good if we would have a way to make it available to the public prior. I know it can be, it would be on the agenda, I assume it would be an attachment to the agenda. Maybe we would want to put it on our website ahead of time, maybe because of all the interest that we've had, we would want to consider some additional, you know, so people look at it ahead of time.
I'd like to jump in here because that was my vision, that in publishing the special agenda, that in fact, it would be, I also am thinking that I may want to just put a letter on for discussion that would be calling for changes of the Master Matrix. And I was going to speak to you also about if you'd like to submit something or, you know, that there be an opportunity to discuss different versions and all of those be available in advance to the public.
Okay. And then the final question is, why a special meeting off-site instead of doing this as part of our regular board meeting on 22nd? And let me finish there, Loris. So, in the eight years I've been supervisor, there's only been one time, and we've had a lot of contentious meetings over that time, there's only been one time that I felt unsafe that in fact, we had an altercation surrounding the meeting. It didn't happen in the actual meeting, it happened just outside of the meeting. And we have much less control of the situation when we go off-site. And I'm just concerned that we're initiating something that could have some real detrimental, some potentially detrimental impacts, unforeseen detrimental impacts to get where I think you guys want us to go.
Well, as far as where I want us to go, I just want to point out here that I am responding to Mr. Merkin's desire, I am responding to my desire, they may not be the same desire about communications. I decided to go with Gates Hall after we found out that in fact, it could be provided for free, but responding then about why there, I anticipate this to be so well attended for so many people there, that we saw problems with the last discussion we had about a related topic, a particular set of applications. And there was a lot of disgruntlement among people. And the feedback that was received, letters to the editor, et cetera, indicated that I think we got a little lucky that, well, I don't want to say luck, we had four officers there, okay, four officers in law there. And that it was definitely high tension, given the fact, the agenda and the crowded spaces. And so, looking for Gates Hall and looking to have a special meeting was to separate any other agenda items that we would do during a regular meeting on January 22nd and also to allow there to be more space so people were not packed in. I still intend to contact both the Sheriff's Department and Rick Martinez, the Chief of Police in Nevada, let him know that this is going on. And I actually, if it's the meeting I'm thinking about, it was Danny Collins, is that the one you were thinking about? Okay. And I feel that if we can have some staff, in addition to at least four officers, who would just be a presence there, help people as they're seated, that there will not be people on top of each other and that that may help actually allow people to diffuse the situation. We certainly can arrange for officers to be outside as people are leaving so that there is no particular threat against anyone, at least when it comes to getting into the meeting, leading the meeting and surrounding the parking lot.
Can we...
Yes.
This is not a meeting on any specific CAFO application. It's a meeting more on a policy issue. My personal thought is that kind of ratchets it down a little bit in terms of tensions. The meeting that was held here in retrospect, hindsight's always good, hindsight's always great, but we had probably as many people out in the hallway as we had in, and it was at the end of the agenda and people came to try to get a good seat and couldn't even get in and then we're waiting for hours. And I think, but you know what, everybody was really, really civil and well behaved and I, and a couple of girls said, why do you have to have police here? Thank you, you know, and I said, no, I said, I recommend it, even though I'm not on the board, because I just know what crowds can be like sometimes. And they said, oh, it's us all, you know, it's, I think everybody, yeah, let me just say, I think people are going to be very civil because it's a, and particularly it's a policy issue, I'd like to say, ratchet, sit down. I think they will appreciate us having a meeting in the evening because it's a policy issue a lot of people care about. And I think they will appreciate all being able to sit down for the meeting and know that it's one issue, it's going to start right when they get there. I think it's, I think it's an opportunity for us to acknowledge that, you know, we went, you know, we saw some things in hindsight and we're going to try to do a better job on this. Yes, it's going to take more staff time, it's going to be some evening and all of that, but at the same time, I think it's a good thing to do. So, do we need a motion? Are we ready for a motion?
We make a motion, I've got more I want to say. I'd be glad to second the motion.
And keep the topic.
Yeah, we probably should, I should make a motion, okay. I move that we set a special meeting January 22nd, 2019 at 6:00 PM located at Gates Memorial Hall to discuss construction evaluation review of Master Matrix and Nevada.
Yeah, and so for discussion, for continued discussion, I'll second. So, Linda, I think I agree with a lot of what you said, but I think we're kidding ourselves if we don't think the whole long view situation is going to bleed over into this policy discussion. I think we're completely kidding ourselves if people aren't going to convolute the two issues, even though this is going to be a separate issue, or potentially a separate issues. The second thing I'll say is, if you think it was just a fluke or blind luck that we had a meeting that did not turn volatile on December 7th, I think probably you weren't paying attention because it was bubbling beneath the surface all the way through and it had to be managed by multiple people, including police officers moving through the hallways and doing things like that to keep it from really turning into, you know, Todd was one of them that was moving around, to keep this thing, it would have only taken a spark to ignite, ignite really bad things happening. We didn't ever get that spark, it ended up fine, but we lose an element of control by taking it off-site. And you just need to be aware of it as we go, I'm concerned about it.
I appreciate your concern to the, the thought of how we can make it safer, given it's off-site, I certainly am open to any suggestions now or as we move toward the 22nd. About the confusion of the two issues that I think that at least as chair for me, as it starts to get personal or directed toward one issue, to continue to stop it and nicely but firmly say stop. But I do understand in their minds, there is something about the timing here about this, starting back about when the long view decided to apply when they applied and moving forward. And then, we know we have until the end of the month of January for Master Matrix, we can't do anything about that deadline, right? And so, trying to set this up, getting the word out through a press release, explaining what the meeting is about, be very specific about the two issues we're really going to discuss are philosophical issues. And this is the conversation that everybody says they want to have about CAFOs and Master Matrix in Story County. I walked out on December 11th, I happened to exit the building with two gentlemen who own CAFOs. And so, one of the things that they said to me was, we want to be part of that discussion, please. And then there was a little joke made about, you know, don't have us for supper, just have us at the table, okay? And so, I really would like to see if we, and I'm looking at our outreach person there, to see that it's well publicized so that everyone who has this interest in this is able to come and at least listen. And so, it is unfortunate that we just are living in a volatile, more volatile, ruder time. I do understand Supervisor Sanders. And as I said, let's, as we move forward to the 22nd, figure out how in fact, we can best see that everyone is safe there, getting there, while they're there and leaving, including maybe talking to the groups who would tend to have a large contingent there from both sides.
May our response, Mr. Supervisor Sanders said, please don't think that I'm minimizing possible risk in getting a lot of people there together. I'm the one who made, I'm sure several others did, but I made the recommendation that we need law enforcement at the last meeting, okay? Because I've seen it before, I know what can happen and I know that a lot damage can be done if people lose their tempers and lose control before you can get law enforcement in if they're not.
Sure.
So, I have no problem, I have absolutely no problem with having law enforcement there and I wanted to say that to you for the record.
Absolutely. And please understand, I am not, I just want to make sure that we're thinking this thing all the way through because I'm the one who facilitated having law enforcement there. I'm the one who facilitated the meeting occurring like it did, where it did, to try to minimize some of these risks. And I'll say this, and those of you that know me will know this to be true, I'm not somebody who gets concerned about safety or, I'm a huge believer in public disagreement. I think it's one of the things that makes us, makes us great. And in fact, I tend to go the other way, I tend to not get concerned enough about those things. I'm telling you, I have sent through a meeting like this with great intentions, right? And I absolutely trust that we're going at this with great intentions, but I think there are some very real unintended consequences, there are some very real threats that we better go through with our eyes wide open.
And I'd like to comment on that meeting, Danny Collins, because I was there, okay? And we, once again, were in very, very crowded conditions. And I remember, at least in, I don't know if you and I are talking about the same group of people, but I remember sitting up there in the front, squeezed in a corner, hearing it start back there and me looking up and catching Wayne Clinton's eye, former supervisors, but, you know, there. So, there's no doubt about that, once again, a very, very crowded situation. So, I hope we all can work together to try and anticipate, especially in our risk manager and with the local, the sheriff and with the local police department, anticipate what do we need to do to see that people feel that they at least have enough space and that they feel safe going and coming on that. And how, if we get someone who starts with the kind of rhetoric and remember from Collins, okay, how do we handle that to set it, to cut it down right away? So, I do look forward, I'm glad to hear too, that there's no resistance to the meeting taking place from an expression of thoughts because to me, we try, I don't think we in Story County are at the point, and I hope we never get to the point, where we can't hold a discussion on a hot topic because we're afraid of violence.
Yeah, well, you've been around me long enough to know that I encourage multi-point view and have never been worried about having the conversation, I just want to make sure we're having it in an appropriate and safe manner and hopefully one that has a chance to benefit our community. So, a couple of other questions for you guys. Have you thought through the structure of the meeting? Are there going to be time limits on the public speakers that we're going to have?
Yes, I have thought about that. I have two minutes and we'll put that out, I hope, in the press release as I work with Leanne Harder on that, to point out that we will only be addressing, you know, in a philosophical nature, that speakers will be limited to two minutes, that we ask that anyone who wants to present written information, get it to us so we can include it on the agenda and on the website prior to that. And so, as much as we can control that in advance also, no flyers, no posters, none of the placards or anything like that. I would ask, I know it's a freedom of speech issue and Ethan, maybe you and I need to talk about it, but I'd ask that people not wear layering, T-shirts or whatever, certainly if someone wants to wear a T-shirt from somebody they're affiliated with, you know, or affiliated membership, but nothing that's going to immediately get in somebody's face. I don't know if we can do that or not, okay? But we'll, I'll discuss that. So, yes, I have thought very much about this.
Perfect, well, I appreciate you thought of it and I appreciate the idea of time limits and just thinking through, Loris, whether we're going to allow people to speak twice before we go through everybody. And then the final thing I'd like to consider is, clearly we've got multiple viewpoints on this issue.
Correct.
Is there going to be an effort made to make sure that we're hearing regularly from both sides? If that means going back and forth, like I know some of our state commissions do?
Right.
Or if it means just regularly making sure that we insert a different point of view?
I had thought about that and already, and so I like the idea of going back and forth and that if we're just asking that any speaker fill out one of our orange cards and on our orange speaker cards, it clearly says, kind of speaking pro or against or, you know, kind of what are you addressing? And then asking one of our staff members to sort through those. It will be a somewhat imperfect system, some people arrive late, you know, and we may not have an even balance. But I had thought about that and I'm open to other changes in that. Once again, that's where I think feedback, I'm glad to see Mr. Black here today, I assume he might be here for Farm Bureau or, yeah, okay. So, you know, but addressing with someone, once again, the groups will be organizing of seeing, is this an okay process for you? Would you like, you know, would maybe a couple of volunteers like to step forward and monitor, but I want staff to keep control.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
I've seen a lot of times that in things like this, you just set up two mics, you put a pro and a con, sign on them and you ask people to stand and make a line and it's a lot easier than asking staff to sort two cards at that time.
Okay, I like that idea too, so that could be another one.
Yeah, so I would just caution against that idea, I've seen that as well, but then we are visibly demonstrably dividing our room and you end up with the my side versus your side kind of thing. And again, it just adds combustibility to the situation. So, the cards, as I see, are pretty simple, they just fill it out with their name and address and they either check pro or con and it would fall to our chair to organize those as well. And I don't see that as a big staff issue. I would be reluctant to divide, to say, okay, anybody pro act, sit on this side of the room or that side, you know, and you go here or there. I just, again, I'm concerned about where this thing might head and I don't want us to do anything that could negatively impact a concern we already have.
Thank you for that. And I do, I favor the card way to go, but once again, let's go ahead, let's get the release out, let's contact, you know, Farm Bureau here and also ICCI, maybe there are other groups who want to comment, somebody from the university. And I see, Leanne, you've got your hand up.
Just, I don't know if you're aware of the Ames City Conference, or Conference Board starts at 5:30 that evening, the public meeting.
I, that, you know, I missed that connection there, but it may be that we'll have to weigh in by, in fact, I was going to talk about the Assessor Mini Meeting here later, maybe we have to weigh in by a comment or not attend that one this year. Let's get there, one sec. Okay. The second, 22nd is it, Leanne? And I want to thank, go on record of thanking Alyssa Wittenall and Erin from the City of Nevada and also various other staff that I've had to ask different dates from and we tried to change at once. Schedules have been difficult to coordinate with ISAC's new Supervisor School at the same time and trying to figure out going there with various people who are available. So, thank you. So, we'll have to, as the board gets under that item, maybe we'll have to discuss how we want to handle the conference board situation.
So, you're suggesting we're going to miss?
Yeah.
I don't think that's ever happened.
Okay. I am suggesting that this is...
I mean, we're one of three entities.
Major entities of there, when you hear what the recommendation is, at least from the mini... Major entities of there, when you hear what, um, what the recommendation is, at least from the mini board, um, I think that you'll find that there is not much, uh, much difference this year than last year as far as the increase of what their budget overall, et cetera. Uh, you are now saying that instead, that you feel it's very important that we be at that particular meeting based upon the fact that already there's been the mini assessors board, and we all were in agreement that this was a very reasonable request.
Absolutely, but the mini, the mini board has no authority.
Correct, then the, the full conference board has that.
It's the full conference board, it has the authority, and that's three entities, that's school boards, made up of several school boards.
Correct.
The city council, the board of supervisors.
Correct, and the, where the supervisors.
That's the only three votes on that, and, and like I say, I, I know in the time I've been here, there's never been a time we haven't had at least two supervisors at that meeting. There've been many times we haven't had all three, but there've never been a time we haven't had at least two.
Okay, so, one, another option I'd like to throw out here then, is we move it to seven o'clock for our meeting, and that would allow the five-thirty, we all know that the mini conference, or, I'm sorry, the conference board, huh?
It'll be quick, I didn't think you could go six-thirty, Laura, I'm just suggesting that I believe it's important that we not, um, uh, neglect one of our responsibilities in favor of another unless there's no way around it. Um, and, and so I'm suggesting
All right, so what does everybody feel about the time moving to seven? I'd like that extra time, okay?
You're moving to seven or eleven, six-thirty?
Yeah, I'm, I know this puts, now, I would like staff to weigh in on this now, because staff are the ones that will be working, um, unusual hours. Does anyone see, that means we might not get out of there till ten or ten-thirty. And I'm looking at most of the staff who would be most impacted by this, okay? So, um, I would, uh, entertain an amendment to move to seven?
Yeah, since Linda made the motion, she needs to move it.
All right, thank you.
I will make, I, I move that we change the time in here from six o'clock to seven o'clock in motion.
Yeah, a second.
All right.
Uh, and then I've got, well, just one final thing, if you guys will indulge me, I wanna understand it, and Ethan, I think I'm asking you for this. So I wanna understand, uh, what a resolution in support of moratorium, uh, what kind of legal weight that carries, because here's what it seems to me, and I may be oversimplifying here, but if at the same meeting we're gonna discuss the master matrix, which in essence is Story County saying, yes, we wanna participate in the state law as it's written, we wanna take our role in the state law as it's written, that's one. And then the second one is this idea of a, and I'm viewing the ICCI drafted resolution in my mind right now, but this resolution offering a moratorium, which basically says, we don't like the state law, and we don't wanna follow the state law, and we wanna stop everything, and it just seems to me incongruent that at the exact same meeting, we would potentially pass both, we're gonna stick with state law, we're gonna participate in state law, and a resolution saying, no, 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 we don't like state law, we wanna go separate in state law.
Excuse me, it's still, until we've heard the discussion.
I, I'm not
No, no, I'm saying that that's a potential in all, no, no, I'm not trying to debate the issue, I'm asking the legal counsel to just think about those issues and give us some advice on what that looks like, because like I say, I think we're considering two things that are in gru- in conflict with each other.
And I, and, and that's where I think we've gone over it in that opinion, uh, because we may not, there may not be that opinion shared by the other two supervisors, and that would be something to be debated separately, correct?
Well, I think, yeah, that would be, take place in the meeting, but I, I would like to review both resolutions, like the structure resolution and Supervisor Merkin's proposal resolution, I mean, compare them side by side, and give you a legal opinion of whether or not there is a conflict.
And that's all I'm asking for.
Yeah, I'll be prepared to give that.
So you're saying there is, that then, and you'll be prepared to give that on the twenty-second?
Yes.
Okay, correct, okay, great.
I appreciate that, 'cause I have not
Yeah, we discussed that yesterday as well.
Yes, and I, and that's, so we'll be ready on that.
So that would be another agenda item, possibly the first agenda item?
Yeah.
All right, okay. Okay, all right, so, um, does that take care of the list there?
That's all I've got.
All right.
Uh, just real quick.
Yes.
As this risk manager.
Oh, well, I suppose we should still be identifying everybody, it's still on tape, still official.
Yep.
Okay.
Top line, we're risk manager, um, for Story County, just a couple, do we know what the quantity increase possibility is? Or for that gates, do we know what the population count is for that location?
They can have up to three hundred people.
They can have up to three hundred people, okay. And do we have an idea how many employees we're gonna have there? This is just a risk calculation, this is the information that I, I didn't, and if we don't have it right now, we can get it, I just wanted to ask.
Four, five, six, I would say ten to fifteen maximum. Who would be, maybe have a function, maybe few.
All right, thank you.
Okay, sure. Okay, are we ready to take a vote? I'll ask for the vote then, Supervisor Merkin?
Yes.
Supervisor Sanders?
Yes.
And Supervisor Olson, yes. Thank you for everyone, um, in the, the very thoughtful way that everybody has thought about this. Now we'll go down to item, um, seven, eight, seven dot eight, okay? Uh, consideration of appointment with the Story County Board of Supervisors term ending indefinite per twenty-eighty agreement. Um, I'm the one who asked to pull this, so, um, Supervisor Sanders, I couldn't find where it said that one person was indefinite in there.
No, it's not, it should be annual. It ju- that's just, I, uh, that's just an error of the way this was written here, it should be, this should be, this should've been an appointment we dealt with last week, we, we let it get on there.
Got it, okay, got it.
This should be an appointment that we do at our organizational meeting each year. We will have, so we're, we're, uh, absolutely part of this for at least ten years. After ten years, the twenty-eighty can be abolished by any entity, but for ten years, we're in this, and we need to appoint somebody in our first meeting each year.
Okay, thank you, yeah, 'cause I found the ten years, but I couldn't find the, okay, all right. So, um, I take a motion approving with, uh, the change to yearly, uh, with the term ending, uh, December thirty-one, I guess, twenty-nineteen.
I'll move it for purposes, purposes of discussion.
Okay.
Who are you moving? So we gotta appoint one of us, I, I have suggestions.
I'm sorry, I am, I'm moving for purposes of discussion that we change our term from indefinitely to one year in our committee appointments.
Oh, okay, second. Yeah, but we still have to appoint somebody, that's what, that's what this is. And I guess the way it's written, I would be the appointee.
Do you have a second?
I did.
Okay.
Okay, discussion.
Discussion, I see, what I see in here, and I can see that could be confusing, it's any membership in governments, the board, nine-one-one board members.
No, that's different.
That's different, where does it say, okay, where does it say that it's annual?
It doesn't say it's annual, it says we will have an appointee.
Let me interject, yeah, Doug Helton with Ames prepared to draft the twenty-eighty. Um, I reviewed it and made changes, uh, see a term for Ames, reviewed and made changes. To attorney of Iowa State, reviewed and made changes. And it fell on Deb Childruff to determine that there was actually not a term, so, we have to determine.
That, that makes sense, and I assume somebody's going to have it on their list to do a revision.
Well, well, I just say this, it doesn't have to be annual, any of the three entities can appoint or reappoint at any time. So Bob Kindred is the appointee from Ames, and I believe that at some point in the future, Bob's gonna retire. And when he retires, it doesn't have to be at a date certain that Ames would appoint somebody new. Same thing for Iowa State, Pam Kane, the vice president, is the current appointee for Iowa State. But if Pam Kane ever gets another job, or they decide they wanna appoint somebody else, it could be somebody else, same thing for us. All I'm suggesting is that for now, we would make this one of our regular annual appointments of a board of supervisors member, but we're not bound to that by twenty-eighty.
What I hear you saying is it's up to the entity who's assigning the person, what the, what the term is.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
And, um, I have a question, uh, Supervisor Sanders, do you think one year is enough for, uh, you and a term? 'Cause I actually write down two years, thinking this was the two years of this particular board, and I just wondered with everything going on, if, uh, stability of, of people knowing who's going to be there through the implementation phase was?
So, so knowing, based on what I know now?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, probably I'll come back in January and say it makes the most sense for, for continuity.
Okay.
But I don't think we should be bound by that, I think that, I mean, just like all our others, I could make the same case about some of our other boards and commissions, that continuity is important, but I think we should have that conversation as part of our organizational meeting.
Okay, all right, all right. In that case then, if there's no more discussion, I'll call for the vote. Okay, Supervisor Merkin?
Yes.
Supervisor Sanders?
Yes.
And Olson, yes, okay, thank you. All right, we have now come to public forum number two. Would anyone like to speak? Okay, moving on, lay us on assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from the various supervisors. And, uh, Supervisor Merkin, was there anything you'd like to tell us about your first week on the job?
I have my computer logged in.
Hey, all right, you can have the applause.
I've, I've met with a lot, a lot of department heads and, and staff, and they've been all very, very helpful. Um, and I do appreciate it, and I think I'm getting my feet on the ground, and, and I appreciate particularly everybody's tolerance in answering my questions, even if it's not in your job description, I say, thank you. And, um, I, I had one meeting last night, it's really not an official one, but it's interesting, the, um, the original Squaw Creek Watershed, um, it's not the management authority, but it's the folks who started doing the monitoring, and, um, kind of they, their interest and their excitement about the issue of water quality led to one of the things that brought up the watershed management authorities, and that was very interesting. I think they might be, the, the, the monitoring's really kinda fallen by the wayside, and I'm wanting us to think about how the county might be able to help with that, 'cause a lot of its resources, a DNR drawing up, and I just read our, um, watershed assessment again, and, uh, the consultants talked about doing more, doing more testing. And, um, I just thought, I just wanted to kinda put that bug in people's ears, particularly Margaret's right now, thinking, is there?
I'm not on the assessment committee, so.
Oh, okay, well, the assessment committee then, I'll talk to the committee about it, because I think that there's, you know, there are people out there that are willing, I'm trying to look at high school students, to get, like, another generation of people coming in to be concerned about water quality and doing, doing monitoring, and I think that's, if, if there were some infrastructure there, I think that could be a great thing we could do, so, that's it.
Okay, hey, Supervisor Sanders?
Yeah, so Story County, amazingly, coincidentally, um, so nine-one-one did in fact sign on the twenty-eighty, City of Ames has it on their agenda for tonight, uh, and the indication is that Ames, that Iowa State will sign on soon after that, and it's gotta get filed with the Secretary of State, as I understand it, before it becomes an official entity. Once it becomes an official entity, uh, the consultant can start negotiating with the two vendors that have made bids. Uh, I'll tell you the initial estimates, and this is really initial, is that, um, it's about, by the time you include all discounts and everything else, it's about one point five million dollars per entity for the build-out of the backbone, and then I estimate, this is my estimation, another between one and one point five million for the purchase of Story County, um, uh, specific equipment. Um, so as you guys start, uh, thinking this through, start with a, um, with a three million dollar, um, alpha in your head, and hopefully we'll do better than that. The other thing that I would ask you guys to start thinking through is, what if E role do you, would you like to see Story County take in assisting, uh, or facilitating some of our specifically smaller, uh, departments and first responders with the purchase of these very expensive, I think of them as about five thousand dollars a piece, uh, pieces of equipment necessary to access the system? Uh, a lot of conversation for us in the future as we work through all this, but it's time for us to start thinking about it. Uh, if we were gonna go down the road of any kind of bonding, uh, which as I review our budget situation, bonding is gonna be necessary for Story County, maybe there's another way, but if we were to go down that road, it would have to occur, as I understand, by April first, in order for the debt service levy to actually kick in, um, for FY twenty. And so we've got a lot of consideration over the next few weeks, if in fact we're going, uh, to be able to move down that.
Okay, thank you, and, uh, all right, you're, I just wanna make sure you're just not taking a breath, but, okay, all right, okay, so.
Wasn't that enough?
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that's okay, thank you though for, for volunteering, that cheering news. All right, um, so I mentioned earlier that I'd been to the Ames mini-board, uh, uh, discussion for the assessors office, and the key, the two key points out of this is that of, um, or three, I guess, first of all, uh, that they've asked for a five percent raise for the staff, three percent, which would be cost of living, two percent, uh, would be for, uh, the merit, on the merit, and, uh, they believe that that's what the City of Ames is paying for the other employees. The total budget has gone down, and that's because this is a non, this will be a non-assessment year, so they won't be incurring all of the expenses, so the increase, the total increase of the budget is one point eight percent, despite the salaries, because there are several expenses that are only occurred in the years when they're actually reassessing property. The third thing is, is that the assessor has asked, um, will be asking at the meeting now, earlier on the, the twenty-second, to be reappointed for another six years. His appointment date is not up for one more year, it's a six-year term, but the law does allow for him to start asking for a reappointment a year in advance. So those are the three items, and, um, I will get the packet to, uh, everybody, I have a PDF of the entire packet, so I'll get that to you.
Do you know, so I appreciate that it only goes up one point eight percent, but Laura, that's comparing apples to oranges to the assessment year this year. Do you know how the increase compares to our last, uh, assessment year two years ago?
I can get that information for you before I send on the packet and before the twenty-second.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So, and I just want to, um, thank all the department heads and everyone else who was involved with the, uh, continuation of government exercise last Friday morning, and, uh, we learned what we don't know and what we would need to know, I found it personally interesting. We started at one place, which was more of an organizational, what is everyone going to do? And by the time we were, we were done at noon, we discovered our absolute number one priority was to find fuel. And so that was quite a shift from starting on rather lofty, uh, lofty beginnings to come down to, we better know where we're getting gas, and we better know within hours. So that's my personal observation, anybody else who was there have an observation they wanna share? No? Okay, in that case then, we'll go ahead and we'll move on in the agenda. And I believe it is up Ethan's turn to be up.
Yeah, so this is, uh, I quote twenty-one point five, sub one, sub C, uh, we're moving to closed session, as we're in closed session, discuss matters that are currently or likely to be in litigation, and discuss the legal strategy with my counsel, or the county business may be, uh, or likely to be, uh, jeopardized prejudice.
Thank you, I will take a motion.
Yeah, I'll move that we go into closed session.
I'll take a second.
Second.
Thank you, um, any discussion, all, uh, we'll go ahead, Sanders?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
And, uh, know, we normally take about a five-minute break, or does anybody need a break, however long it takes?
Yes, can you just, Laura, when you announced that we'll come back out of closed session and report it? If we have, you can't take any action in the closed session, I understand?
Certainly, yes, to make it clear that when we go into closed session, we'll be discussion only, we'll be coming out. Uh, if we take any action, that's when we will make the motion and, uh, the second, and to have any of the discussion that occurs there. So we will reconvene in open session when we're done.
It is recorded.
I'm also recording.
All right, I call us back into open session. All right, okay, um, is there any motion, uh, that anyone wants to make from the, from the, uh, as a result of the closed session? None? Okay, all right. Noting that we have no action from that, I now will seek adjourned.
No motion.
I will second, and we are adjourned.